It is February the 5th, 2019. We're here at 6:00 PM. It's the City Hall, 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. And the Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Pastor Larry Dixon and the Face Assembly of God to do our invocation, followed by the Pledge Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by Councilman Tony Allen. All rise please.
Father, it is often that we come before you and we feel unworthy. We feel that our days are not long enough to do all the things we need to be doing for you. But Father, we recognize that these leaders of our city are men and women who have committed themselves to do good in the best way that they know how. And Father, where there is rancor and divisiveness, I pray that your Holy Spirit would bring healing and the ultimate good. And Father, where there is a lack of understanding, I pray that your Holy Spirit would enlighten, even if it takes dreams to bring the truth to us. Lord, we live in a time when there is a tremendous amount of deception. There are a lot of people saying a lot of things and claiming it to be the truth, but it isn't. Father, we want your truth to lead our lives and to guide us and direct us. May everything that we do, whether as private citizens or as members of this illustrious City Council, I pray that we would do it to the best of our ability to the truth of your word. And we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
If y'all join me in the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of no doubt, individual with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas flag. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state of no doubt, one individual.
At this time, we normally would do the citizen's participation. We don't have any, no one has signed up for citizen participation, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, first item being consider approving the City Council meeting minutes of January 15th, 2019. Second item, consider adopting Resolution Number 1904, approving a justice assistant grant application for the training force simulations, simulators, I'm sorry. And number three, consider accepting the donations of a boat and jet skis from the Granbury Volunteer Fire Department. And number four, consider adopting ordinance Number 1905, amending the City of Granbury Code of Ordinance, Chapter 3, Building Regulations, Article 3.10, flood plain management to reflect updated flood insurance rate maps prepared by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. And number five, consider adopting ordinance Number 1906, amending Article 13.14, water and wastewater impact fees, amending Section 1.50.511 fee schedule of the City of Granbury Code of Ordinance. So Council, you've had an opportunity to look over these consent agenda items. Are there any items on there you wish to discuss, make changes to, or remove off of the consent agenda at this time? If said none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I have a motion by Councilperson Reiner and a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion on the consent agenda? If none, all in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The consent agenda is approved. Next, we'll move into our deliberation agenda. The first item being to consider accepting the donation funds to purchase a swing structure for the firefighter's playground and improving the use of the city funds to cover the additional expenses if necessary. Chris, do you have a staff report on that?
At this time, we'll call Aaron McLean, our Director of Parks and Recreation. He's got a lot of good news, great assistance from a great little lady.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. Well, some of you may have already met Oakley. We have a special guest with us today. If it's all right, Mayor, I'd like to have her and her mother come forward.
Sure.
We put the chair over there so she can stand.
All right, okay. So back on November 30th, I believe I got an email, and it was about a young girl who lived close by our Fireman's Memorial Park, and she would frequent that park with her mother and friends. And she contacted me, and she saw the need for a swing set for her and her friends to use at that park. So I said, well, let me see if we could fit a swing at that site. So I met Jen and Oakley on site, and we did some measurements. As you can tell, the picture to the right, that's Oakley telling me where it was going to go and how we were going to build it. So we found a location for the swing. We got some pricing for the swing. And then Oakley came to the Parks Board meeting, and she told the Parks Board we were going to have a swing and that they were going to raise the funds for it. And of course, they approved the swing to go at the site, and they have raised some money. Would you like to tell us how much money you've raised so far?
$500? How much?
They have raised just barely shy of $6,000.
Going to give a jury competition.
So we've got some pricing on a swing. Scott, is there a next slide there? Okay, so you can see the existing Fireman's Memorial Park, the top-left corner. The swing set below that, that, as you can see, the framework matches the framework on the memorial, and it would be in red. That is a single bay swing, and they've got money for a double bay. They originally thought, well, let's try to get one that size, and they saw how well the fundraising was going, so they enlarged it. So we've got room for a two-bay swing. And in that swing set, we would have two of your traditional belt swings. We've got a youth lap swing that contains smaller children. And we've also got an ADA adaptable swing, so it's one that cradles the physically challenged as well. So we would have that at that site. So for a double-bay swing, like you see there, with, and of course, we know every playground has to have a protective fall zone, and you have to have some way to contain the material that you use. So for a double-bay swing with all the components, some black timbers to match, like you see at the memorial, and a two-way ADA-approved ramp, the quote for that runs 5,933-71. So they have raised enough to purchase all of that material. All we would do is do the installation through the city, and then we would provide whatever fall zone material we decide to go with. So we've come to Council tonight asking y'all to approve the donations from Oakley and to allow us to fund the remainder for the fall zone material from the Parks Department.
Thank you, Aaron. Oakley, how did you raise so much money? What did you do?
They had...
You want to go tell them? Nope? All right. We might want to raise some more money like that. That was pretty awesome. That was pretty awesome. So Council, you heard about the fundraising and the swing set. Is there any questions for Aaron or any comments on this?
Mayor, I say it's great. Little girl did a fantastic job.
Getting a head start, didn't she?
Something that we'll be proud of for years, but you can be proud of it for centuries because you're a little younger than I am. But thank you very much for doing what you do. It really helped us and helped our city. Thank you.
I agree, Oakley. Thank you, and we look forward to your next project. Yes, we look forward to that.
Thank you, Council.
So Council, if no further questions on that, we'll entertain a motion to accept the donations as presented. I have a motion by Councilperson Reiner. And a second by, I'm going to give that one to Mr. Wadley here. Can we have a second? Any more discussion, Council? If none, all in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. That is approved. Thank you, Oakley. We're just pictured out today. Well, that is definitely community involvement at its best right there, so thanks again. Our next item is a public hearing considering adopting ordinance Number 1907. I'm going to call upon Scott Stoptek to give the Council some information on that. You would please, Scott.
We have a public hearing to consider an SUP to allow for a manufactured HUD code home in an interim holding district. The applicant is Mr. George Brumball, and this particular property was annexed in 2015 and was subsequently annexed for that portion of that or the southern portion of that property in 2017. All those uses that you see lined along Holly Hills Cemetery Road, this is kind of north of the city, north of the lute, on the northeast section of the city, what were categorized as grandfathered non-conforming. So grandfathered non-conforming, they were registered as HUD code homes once they were annexed. They were logged as such, but as interim holding, this non-conformity status doesn't allow them to expand, in essence. So our zoning ordinance basically states that it's a snapshot of what's in place at any given point in time. You can see on the top highlighted portion of this particular screen, the evidence of an expansion of a non-conformity is adding a new building or structure, adding an impervious cover, or any physical or tangible improvement to the property. Now a little backstory. So what had happened was Mr. Brumball was in the process of constructing the back portion of the property for an accessory dwelling unit, in essence, without a permit. So he was approached by our building department. He was given a stop order. He talked to the planning department. Our planning department went through the process of what a non-conformity is and how you can't expand it without getting right by the zoning ordinance. And in our zoning ordinance, you can see in the upper-left corner that a HUD code manufactured home requires an SUP in interim holding. That's the upper-left chart. That S requires an SUP. The accessory dwelling unit, alternatively, is permitted by right. So the use that he was promoting to expand upon in his backyard is a by-right use. It's just our zoning ordinance that allows for an expansion of a non-conformity. So in dialogue with our planning department, Mr. Brumball stopped work, filed an SUP to allow for him to be compliant with our zoning ordinance, get the SUP for the HUD code home. Again, there's no work being done on the HUD code home. It's just there. But the SUP will allow him to be compliant with our zoning ordinance and allow for intensification under that provision for that interim holding district, which would then therefore allow for accessory dwelling unit by right. So there's a few moving parts here. To the left is a site plan of what the property owner, Mr. Brumball, provided us. You can see the square on the bottom portion of the site plan is the accessory dwelling unit. It's roughly 25 by 20. It needs to meet and does meet on the site plan our area requirements for side and rear yard requirements. Again, there's no expansion proposal on the HUD code home, which is to the north of the accessory dwelling unit. These are pictures of the site during the discussions in the Planning and Zoning Commission, and even prior to the meeting, we had heard that there were some appliances out in the front yard. We drove by, took pictures of the site. We couldn't see any evidence of any kind of appliances being stored out there. The front yard looked pretty clean and evenly manicured. This particular picture shows where the property is located. It's actually highlighted in yellow within the circle, in the city, north of the lute, relative to our CCNs. You can see to the south, the City of Granbury that's highlighted blue is in our water CCN. The purple area to the north is the area that's in Mesa Grande. They have a line along Holly Hills Road, so they would be the most proximate individual to provide water to this. The property is being sustained on septic. We do have a letter from our inspections department saying that they looked at the septic system, and it could be sized for an additional bedroom or an additional service unit. That's in your staff report as well. So the city staff, in compliance with state statute, mailed out 11 notices to adjoining property owners within the statutory 200-foot notification halo. We also published in the Hood County News, as of tonight, we've received the opposition that's noted here on the screen comprising roughly 45.6% of the joint property within the notification halo. Therefore, a three-quarter vote is required due to the notification halo requirements being over 20%. Additionally, as a part of staff presentation and recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the city staff went out there and noted that all adjacent properties to the east and west were similar type uses. They were captured as non-conforming. They're HUD code homes. There's that compatibility issue. So in essence, when we see somebody trying to be compliant with the zoning ordinance from a use standpoint, and there's no outstanding issues that we can see from a land use standpoint thing, we try to support that. So there's a staff recommendation of approval, again, based on that compatibility issue. The date of the property in the south is vacant. The Planning and Zoning Commission deliberated on this. There were some adjoining property owners that had showed up at the Planning and Zoning Commission and voiced their opposition to it. Based on some of the statements at the Planning and Zoning Commission, they recommended by vote of five a's and two nays, denial of the request as presented. So again, that's another measure that kicks in a three-quarter vote. So due to either one or the other, a three-quarter vote's required by Council. Mr. Mayor, be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing to anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item. Go ahead and state your name and address to the city secretary so she can record it. You would please.
George Brumball. And my address is 809 Holly Hills Cemetery Road. And the zip is 76048. Thank you, City Council and Mayor and City Manager. I just wanted to clear up that there was some things that happened before we started building the property, the house on the property. I came in good conscience right to start with, before anything was done, before we even thought of doing anything, asked for permits. And what happened is they told me that it was an interim holding, so they weren't exactly sure if I needed permits or not, but they thought it would have to be like 80% brick or rock. And so I got that far. And so I came back, and I inquired what I needed to do further, and they said, you need to find out about the septic system, get some sort of a diagram. And so I, but they said the city didn't have it to call that county because they should have the records since they had it before 2015. So that's what I did, and they said, no, we don't have it. The city has it, so a few times. So anyway, due to my ignorance, a lot of this has transpired. But anyway, I apologize for that. More work for all of you. But at that time, I came back after I drew up a diagram with the help of Mr. Stembridge also, who I bought the property from. And I also asked for the required permits again, and I was referred to Mr. David Shaper, who I don't know if he works here anymore. I haven't seen him since that time. But what he told me was kind of confusing to me, probably because this is my first time with ever trying to build anything, even having a property. And so I finally asked him what step, one, two, three that I need to take. And he said, well, you don't know much, so I recommend you get a building contractor, and he can help you out. And I told him I had looked into it, and they said the place was so small, they have so much growth in Granbury that they really didn't want to bother with it. So I finally found a friend that had moved here from Fort Worth. He said he would help me out. And I asked him, please come and talk to the officials here at the City Hall, because they said I need permits. I've heard a little bit different ways, but here the professional, please come and work everything out. And he told me that, after a while, after he started it, he told me that he had checked with some other contractors in the area, and he was going to go ahead without permits. And that's my mistake. I encouraged him to go, but since he wasn't doing it, I relied on his professionalism since I didn't really know. I was confused what was actually necessary since I had tried so many times. And also, at this point, I asked Donna what options were available. Oh, that was before I got the contractor. Yeah, she recommended getting a contractor too. So I soon received a stop work notice after the foundation was laid. I called the contractor right away, and he says, oh, I'm sorry. And he had moved back to Fort Worth. And so here we are. I came to City Hall right away, tried to repair the damage, repair my reputation. You know, I hate, I have a squeaky clean record. I'm 51. I hate to, but it's just mainly due to ignorance. I should have done more research. So here we are. So I apologize for all the inconvenience.
Scott, is the SUP falls in line. Everything's covered with the SUP, right? Everything, all those recommendations for that?
Well, the SUP would apply solely to the HUD code home on the site. It doesn't apply to his situation with the accessory dwelling unit directly. Now, it would allow him to work with the building inspections department to permit the accessory dwelling unit, and also work with Mesa Grande to see if they have availability on connections. But that's a separate issue altogether. In essence, the SUP, to circle back around, the SUP would, the SUP would allow for the HUD code manufactured home and allow him to be compliant with the zoning ordinance and the interim holding zoning district to have a HUD code home there.
Okay.
Mr. Mobley. Scott, we set it at P&amp;Z meeting together on that. I think the discussion went way further than what's being asked at this point. Am I correct?
There was some deviations off on other issues that were really unrelated to the SUP for the HUD code home.
So that's a long yes. So, but we're just getting the SUP, which is the first step in this rather tedious process, wouldn't you agree?
Yes.
So really, we're not approving a building. We're not approving anything infrastructure-wise. We're just saying, does he have the right to even look into this?
Correct. So what we're doing is we're issuing the SUP to allow for the HUD code home to be compliant in an interim holding district. It will also allow him to properly process, if the resources are available, permits for the accessory dwelling unit in the back.
So that's a yes to it?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I need. Because like I said, the discussion went on far too many tangents, as far as I know.
Okay, we'll continue with the public hearing here, and then if we come back, Council, if we got any more questions for this gentleman here, the owner, then we'll call you back up, okay? Thank you. No, that's fine, that's fine. So is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this matter in the public? And if I could have you, sir, before you leave, fill out the paperwork. I don't know if you filled that out or not, Carter, so if you could, fill out some paperwork with the city secretary there so she'll have your information. So no further discussion from the public. We'll close the public hearing. Council, you got any discussion for Scott or the owner there?
Mayor, I got a couple of questions.
Councilman Allen.
Scott, if you pull back up 67 of 208, oh, that's not Scott here, I'm sorry. It's, the question I got here is, is the red the property line?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that building is sitting over on the other guy's property?
So what had happened, if you noticed, there were two annexations that took place, one in 2015, one in 2017. And this really shows it very well. So you can kind of see the color distinction in the fencing in the dark area. What had happened was in 2015, when we annexed, those areas that only went to the kind of darker area to the back didn't meet the septic requirements. So Mr. Stembridge wanted to sell the properties. In order to do that, he had to replat all those properties and give them the area requirements for the septic system to be compliant by county standards. So that's why you see the lots larger. So that lot line actually goes back to the red now. They used to go back to the fence line, which is on the site plan. Notice the fence line bisecting the property, but they have since been replatted in order to allow for septic system compliance. And then, so the lot actually goes back all the way as platted here.
Scott, there is already double wides and trailers there, right?
Right.
There's five more.
Five?
There's five more.
Okay.
But they're not looking for their SUP. They're still non-conforming.
There are non-conformances? So if we do a, I'm real confused. I thought we did a SUP on this about a year ago.
No, sir.
What did we do?
Voluntary annexation.
That's all we did, was annexation. Okay, so now it's annexed. If he goes with the SUP tonight, how far is that going to take him?
It will allow for a compliant HUD code house on that particular lot.
It'll be in performance with the zoning requirements.
But then he comes back and gets the permit?
He can ask for a permit. And if he applies for a permit, it's because you platted it, and you're going to get it.
What would be the reason he wouldn't get it?
Well, he's got to prove that he can get water, adequate water supply. He's got to prove that the septic is enough. He's got to measure all those setbacks and the materials that we have to build it. See if they flush all that out in a permit.
Same as anybody after they get their SUP. Same as anybody, after, after they get the S U P, then the permitting process goes through and it could be water or anything.
Sure, okay. I was just curious to.
The accessory dwelling, it's the way they've got listed here, it's not another home, it's just, it's going to be like a mother of all quarters.
Yeah. I mean, I have no problem with the S U P, I don't. But I was thinking, how are these other people getting by with it?
Well, they're not, they need to do the same thing.
How are they, how come we hadn't stopped them?
They need to come and get an S U P or we need to rezone the property. I mean, there's no need to do anything until they apply for a permit. That's when, that's when they figure out, they need to have their house provided to conform it.
So they can live in it?
Yes.
So this gentleman out here can move in his house?
He didn't have a house.
Or he lives there?
Yeah.
With no, with no water?
He lives in the house next to him.
See the picture there? See that house inside that red box?
Okay.
That's where he lives.
Okay.
He's wanting to build another property right here.
Yeah.
So he needs an S U P to do it then?
Yes, sir.
But, here's the thing, you can't build on an unplatted lot or unzoned lot. So, or if it's not conforming, you got to bring in a performance before you can build on it. That's what he's trying to do, so that he can now go through the permitting process.
Got you.
Now whether he can acquire the water rights for that, or I don't know what he's, that's not for us to talk about tonight.
Yeah. Talk about the S U P tonight.
Yeah, not, not, I have no problem.
The rest of these houses need to do the same thing.
Yes, sir.
If they would do, yeah.
No, ma'am.
We're getting feedback and then you really wouldn't hear. We'll try them out again.
But it's nothing we can do, and I know we're not discussing the other people, but it's nothing we can do if they don't apply for a S U P or, I'll be darned. Okay. I'm glad this guy's coming forward then.
Council, any more discussion?
We might just mention that the P and Z recommended denial, so it will take three quarters of a vote.
Yeah, I think Scott mentioned that, yeah. So council, as the city manager pointed out there and Scott pointed out, that it will take a, for two cases, you know, the percentage of letters and also the P and Z had two nays on that, so it will take a three-quarter vote from the council. So with that said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said S U P.
So moved.
I have the motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mowgli. Council, any more discussion on this S U P? If we need a three-quarter, I will take a record vote. Councilman Corrigan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Wadley?
Aye.
Aye. Councilman Mowgli?
Aye.
And Councilman Reiner?
Aye.
That is approved by majority vote. Thank you. Our next item is a public hearing and consider approving a request of Joseph and Pamela Denton to final plat a point nine eight four acre of the year in Martin survey. And I'm going to call upon Scott Sobcek to give the council some information on that, please.
Thank you, Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. We saw this particular application as a preliminary plat a few months ago. This is TD's transmission. Their development proposal was to expand toward the back of the property on lot one. If you recall, the preliminary plat showed two lots. There's area in the back that comprised lot two, which wrapped around the Temple Hall Highway. Again, as discussed during the preliminary plat, the focus was on lot one to allow for the expansion of the automotive repair facility. All the, all the variances were processed as a part, as a part of that preliminary plat application. It fronts US three seventy-seven, they currently have an access point. Again, here's the site plan that was presented during the preliminary plat showing the expansion to the north, northwest. Granbury Water and Sewer has access throughout the property. Again, all the variances that were tied to the preliminary plat, there are no variances tied to this particular final plat, therefore, the plat appears ministerial in scope. Your planning and zoning commission recommends approval unanimously. Be happy to entertain any questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, it is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? If hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or concerns about this item to Scott or the staff? If none, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said final plat.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mowgli.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corrigan. Council, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is a public hearing and consider approving a request of the Equity Trust Company FBO to preliminary plat of seven point three three nine acre of the Martin survey sites or survey. I'm going to call upon Scott to give us some more detail on that, if you would, please, Scott.
Mayor, council, Mr. Manager, this is a preliminary plat application off Davis Road, just to the north of Acton Highway. It is probably three-quarters of the way outside our corporate boundary, going toward the edge of our ETJ line. It's roughly seven point three acres, there's no zoning in this particular area. It is in our CCN, but there is one water line for Monarch that serves the house that you see there on the aerial. The purpose of the residential or preliminary plat application is to propose three lots of record. The area requirements acreage wise appears to meet the well and septic requirements, with the exception of the one lot to the north that will sustain itself on the one-inch line from Monarch. It's currently present in our CCN area, they don't want to abandon it, they want to use it for that particular site. In December twenty eighteen, the City Council of City of Granbury passed the water wells for the additional two lots to the south. So water's been vetted out, now we just got to go through the subdivision ordinance requirements and go through the variance process in order to cross the T's and got the ISO to speed. So again, we're in the Granbury CCN area, meets the minimum standards for septic, it's in United Co-op's electric service area. There is one building that came up during a topic of discussion and that was the building that circled there and that's been since demolished. And it was a point of discussion because the property line was over it. This is our CCN boundary map, again in green, to the west or east, I'm sorry, is Monarch's jurisdiction area and they do have a one-inch line reaching over into the Granbury CCN to the subject site. With the plat application, we have five variances, we have three, nine, and four-six to not upsize, extend the existing one-inch line along the public frontage. Again, it's just going to serve the house to the north and to not run a main along Davis Road. We have a variance to three, nine, eight, and four-six to not provide a fire hydrant within four hundred and fifty foot. Again, we don't have a proper sized line to support a fire hydrant. We have a variance to three, nine, and four-five to not extend an eight-inch central sewer line. Again, there's no sewer lines in the area, it's greater than one thousand feet away. We have a variance to three, one, eight, and four-ten to not improve Davis Road to urban standards or a concrete standard type street. And we have a variance to four-eight to not install street bikes, which is consistent, compatible with the other areas along Acton and Davis Road in this area. Your city engineer provided you and your staff report a letter regarding the variances and recommends approval of the variances as presented. Your planning and zoning commission deliberated on the variances in the plat as presented by the applicant and they recommend unanimously approval of the variances as presented by the applicant and the preliminary plat as presented. Mayor, be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing, at this time, I'll open up the public hearing to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, is there any questions or concerns about this item to Scott or the staff? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said variances with the preliminary plat as presented by the applicant.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Wadley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corrigan. Council, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That too is approved. Our next item, number ten, is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance number nineteen oh eight approving a request of Glenn Wade for a specific use permit to allow the operation of a run, one guest suite, unhosted bed and breakfast. The property is addressed as two oh four North Brazos Street. Scott, could you give us more information on that, please?
Mayor, council, Mr. Manager, we saw this application approximately one year prior. This particular property is located north of Brazos Street and north of Bridge Street. It's located in a dwelling unit with a common wall. There's a residential unit to the north and residential unit to the south, as would apply to the southernmost residential unit. There's a site plan that was presented approximately a year ago. There's adequate parking as supported by the S U P for the B and B. Again, to the right is the house, it's approximately where the dividing wall is between the two residential units. This is our zoning ordinance that stipulates that in a town home zone district, an S U P is required for a bed and breakfast. Again, supplemental standards are required. They've been operating without incident under the supplemental standards for the past year with no reported incident. Your planning and zoning commission acknowledged that and as with the incremental step up, they recommend approval as presented by the applicant with a three-year term with all the other supplemental standards. In support of the application, we sent out sixteen public notices to adjoining property owners. We also published in the Hood County News. As of tonight, we received one letter in favor, none in opposition. So your planning and zoning commission recommends the S U P with the four following conditions that allows for the operation of one guest suite, four bedroom, unhosted B and B under the following terms and conditions. The parking under the prior year was installed and striped and inspected by the city staff, that's been taken care of. Supplemental standards are all the boilerplate standards that we see, like a wired smoke alarm, et cetera. And then the one that was altered was condition number four to allow for a three-year term and have it expire from three years from today, February fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Be happy to entertain any questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing, I'll now open up the public hearing to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this? We do have a speaker card by the owner, I guess Glenn Wade, you wish to speak, Glenn?
My name is Glenn Wade and I'm a property owner at two oh four North Brazos. As Scott mentioned, a year ago, we were granted a special use permit. We've rented it two hundred and seventy-one days out of two thousand and eighteen, about seventy-five percent of the time. We advertise on humway.com, have a five-star rating now. Last year, we paid five thou, in addition to property taxes, we paid five thousand dollars in rental taxes to the city of Granbury. And as Scott mentioned, the P and Z commission unanimously approved the three-year special use permit, so we're asking for that. And that's all I have, if you have any questions?
Thank you, Glenn. Council, any more discussion? I'm sorry, let me close this. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this? If none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any discussion on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said S U P with the follow, with the said terms and conditions.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mowgli.
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Reiner. So we have a second? Council, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Item number eleven is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance number nineteen oh nine approving a request of the city of Granbury to amend ordinance number oh one dash eight nineteen, the city of Granbury zoning ordinance article four permitting the use and modify the land use requirements for a batch plant, concrete, or asphalt temporary. And let's see who we got, we got Scott talking on that one, okay? Scott, you want to give us some more information?
Absolutely, Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. The planning staff was tasked by the city manager to look into the possibility of adding a use into our temporary use table for temporary batch plants to allow for these temporary setups on-site for the construction of public infrastructure or public and private infrastructure, roads, and other concrete related improvements. Currently, we do not have a definition in our zoning ordinance, we do, well, we do have one, but it only is allowed, is allowed in industrial under the issuance of an S U P. Which is more strict than a permanent batch plant like Ingram's, for example. So we've reached out to other cities and looked at what they have on their books and a lot of cities that we have seen allow for these temporary setups on-site. And one of the good things that it does promote is it really limits the concrete trucks using the highways in and out of the proposed development coming in daily. And it's set up there on-site and actually mixed there on-site and so you don't have that heavy truck, truck traffic on the, on the public roads and that the signals queuing up, et cetera. So there's benefits for this to be revisited. So as a part of your staff report, we've tried to put that supplemental comparative information in. You can see the cities that we've researched, Flower Mound, McKinney, Mesquite, US Frisco, Fairview, et cetera. You can see their zoning districts and again, these are temporary batch plants permitted in all zones. By and large, everyone allowed them in all zones with the exception of the C D D, obviously you don't want them in the central business district, but you want them in growing areas. We also pilfered through their zoning or supplemental standards to see what regulations they had in place. And we tried to pick the fruit from those supplemental standards and put them in our ordinance that we found reasonable. And you can see that list, that was part of your staff report. Supplemental standards A through K that was presented to the planning and zoning commission for approval. As a part of this process, a permittee is also required to get coordinate through TCQ and get a permit from TCQ in order to operate and appliance with those TCQ standards as well. So a lot of these supplemental standards, like compliance with local, state, and federal laws, are, are standards in all cities. So if they violate one, then that permit is possibly revocable. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to read all these, they're in your staff report, but when we had the discussion at the planning and zoning commission, a couple of things came up. And so your planning and zoning commission recommended the addition of one additional standard, which is the second one down, L. They wanted the site to be equipped with shakers or other devices approved by the city's field inspections personnel, which shall help mitigate against the dirt, sand, and soil, construction material, et cetera, from winding up inappropriately on the public roads. Condition E, they, they voted to approve a modification of it. So rather than have it solely at the discretion of the city manager, they wanted the city manager to work with the inspections field personnel to make sure that the location and distance to residential structures or uses was appropriate and get feedback from the inspection personnel. So it's not a large change, but it is one nonetheless in context. The other thing that they touched on was the, there was some discussion on particulate matter, dust, and a way to control that. And in particular, they quoted the city of Grand Prairie and the use of chlorides in order to mitigate against dust. So we reached out to Grand Prairie and to see if they had any regulations that were codified. And we, in our discussions with them, there were no codified statutory requirements that stipulated the use of fluorines and the control of dust. They do work to help keep the soils wet in order to keep the dust down, but they did not codify it, nor were there any cities that we reached out to that required this. The planning and zoning commission and the chair in particular felt that this was more of a best management practice. And again, when we reached out to this particular city, it was, it was in essence a voluntary practice in communication with the developer in order to keep dust down in certain dry events. So the, the other thing that was discussed is this is a new ordinance with a list of supplemental standards, so when it comes to noise, for example, and dust, this is not the final word, certainly if, if we, as we beta test this one site, if there's certain things that the inspections personnel or the city manager or the planning staff is aware of, then certainly we can come back, circle back the wagons and modify this ordinance based on the performance that's happening out in the field. So that is it in a nutshell. Your planning and zoning commission unanimously recommend approval of the addition to the zoning ordinance to allow for the concrete batch plants under the temporary definition with a modification of the, the addition of L. And that's it. Be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing, so at this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody in the? Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? I see Doug's in the audience there. Doug, could you step up to the podium for a minute? I'm gonna put you on the spot here a little bit. I do that all the time out at the club anyway, so.
My name's Doug Stewart. I live in Fort Worth, Texas. I represent Harbor Lakes Development.
Doug, my question, you are-- I mean, you've seen all these modifications to it, are you okay? I mean, is the modifications fit within what you want to do out there?
Yeah, we use these batch plants in every city we pour in, other than when we got ready to do it down here, y'all didn't allow for it, so.
And you've used the shakers and this stuff?
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay. Right, because we're-- you know, like I said, we're on a-- this is a kind of a, like Scott said, a trial basis, not trial basis, but a first time for, you know, us to do this, and we want to make sure that we've got something that's out there that the public's gonna accept too, because it looks like it might be something that we could use later dates for other developments and stuff, because, you know, the need for the concrete.
You'll find all your larger developments, a developer, if you're pouring more than ten thousand cubic yards of concrete, first of all, no concrete company can supply you that many trucks in the timeframe that you need it in. So they'd rather mix that concrete on-site. Like I said, it keeps concrete trucks off the street. We've never had a dust issue. You picture it as being some giant monstrosity, you won't even notice it's up. It'll be up one week and down the next, so.
Did I hear you say it's only gonna be up for a week?
He'll pour that out in about a week, that's correct.
That Monday through Saturday?
Good weather.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Doug. Counsel, do you got any more question for Doug? Thank you, Doug. Okay, Counsel, any more? I'm gonna close the public hearing. Counsel, do you got any more discussion on this item?
Mayor.
Counsel and Allen, I think.
I like the modifications that the P and Z put in, and I'm glad that Doug said he was already doing that, because I think it'll save a lot of dirt and stuff. We're not gonna be on the highway like if it's hauling it in, load after load after load, but still, again, when those dirt trucks and stuff come in, it won't be like it was over on Harbor Lakes or Water's Edge. We had dirt everywhere over here by the apartments that Murphy just built. So I think that's a good deal, and appreciate Doug going for that.
And Counselman Allen, I think that was the concern of the public and the P and Z, you know, because of that that we had in the past, so. Counsel, any more discussion?
Mayor.
Counselman Corgit.
So based on some discussion--
That's a fine.
Who is it? Not me this time.
That's a fine.
Based on some discussion we had had previous to this coming up today, we had kind of talked about a set distance that we had all relatively agreed on. Did that, I mean, did that change? Is there a reason that that's not in here, and instead it reaches, it reads the city manager and the building inspector will determine a distance for each batch plant? Is there a reason for that?
Guess we could ask the city manager what his guidelines are gonna be.
So the reason we don't know that distance is we weren't able, in the amount of time that we had, to go to a batch plant with a decimal meter and do some investigations on noise, how many feet. So this one is, the closest house is four hundred and ninety-three feet, and so we're gonna-- when they're up and running, we're gonna go measure, and we plan on coming back with a measurement recommending to change this ordinance to where it's not discretionary moving forward. But the first one, we need to, like you said, it's a beta test. We're just seeing what it's like for Granbury, just what fits. Another city may not fit us.
Correct.
So we're gonna look at with a decimal meter what we're dealing with and consider that noise and the impact it will have on the community. Another thing you have to consider is, is if they're in a commercial zone or an industrial zone, does that noise level, is it higher, except will be higher?
Yeah, than whatever's already there.
So we need to do some measuring of the noise to be able to get an understanding what it sounds like at three hundred feet compared to four hundred feet or even two hundred feet. So that's what we're, that's what's up our sleeve.
Perfect. Sounds good to me.
So you feel safe at five hundred?
Oh, yeah.
That's kind of what we looked at.
There's no doubt about this, but I don't want to say one size fits all. I want to do some measuring. I want to have some analysis, make some sound decisions based on empirical data, not just, oh, yeah, that's good for Grand Prairie or whoever, you know?
You're the man, Chris, you're the man.
No, we just want to do it right, and we want to protect our residents. We don't want, you know, to be running them out of their homes if you're trying to sleep during the day.
They're closer to the mayor, I mean. If it bothers them, you know so bit.
I sleep during the day.
Right.
Counsel, any more discussion on this item? If no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the modification to the zoning ordinance to allow for the batch plants as depicted in Article Four with the said alterations and the additions from the staff recommendations.
No move.
I have that motion by Counselman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Counselman Allen. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Go to work, Doug.
See you in the morning for a permit, right?
Our next--
He's already got it filled out.
Our next item is a discussion item, is to discuss, to consider preparation and supplemental for an application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the inclusion in the GO Texans Certified Retirement Community Program. Chris, I'm gonna call upon you to give us a staff report on that, if you would please.
Yeah, this is a program that's been mentioned casually among me and a couple of council members, and so we thought we'd look into it, and so we got Michael to chase that rabbit and planning staff, and so I'll let him give you a report on the results, and pretty much there's a good report in your packet here, but let him go over it verbally with you.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel, Chris. Staff was asked to investigate the GO Texans Certified Retirement Community Program to determine if it might be a beneficial program to the city of Granbury. The program is a certification and promotion program provided by the Texas Department of Agriculture. To become a certified retirement community, each community must complete a rigorous application process, including a retiree desirability assessment. Each application is reviewed and scored by an independent advisory committee comprised of volunteers who are experienced in various aspects of community and economic development. According to their website, the benefits of becoming a certified retirement community are use of a statewide marketing campaign to attract retirees, tourists, businesses, and developers, a positive economic and social impact to the community, available tools to assess your community's strengths and weaknesses for recruiting retirees, regional networking opportunities with other certified retirement communities. All thirty-seven cities listed as participants in the program were contacted by us and asked to complete a questionnaire to help us gauge the cost versus the benefit and the level of effort required to achieve the certification. Thirteen cities responded to questions, and those responses were included in your packet. Seven of the responses indicated the city did not renew their certification after the initial five-year term, and four indicated they had renewed for another five years. The others were still in their first five-year period. The initial cost of the program is five thousand dollars, and that is also the cost to renew after five years and every five years. The amount of time spent by cities to prepare the application ranged from three months to four years, depending on the time available to dedicate to the work by each city. If we move forward, we would anticipate outsourcing the work to a consultant at some cost or having interns complete the work. The application and guidelines for the program are included in your packet. Staff is seeking direction from city council on whether the city should invest the time and money to pursue the certification. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Michael. Counsel, any questions for Michael on this? Once again, this is a discussion item. We've done some work on it, and we want the staff to go further with this. We can recommend that also.
Also, would like to add that I visited with Mike Scott with the chamber today, and he said about six years ago, they thought about his board pursuing this, and after investigating it, they decided not to. So it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen through us.
Mr. Allen, you're not gonna ask about the cost of this thing or anything like that?
Well, I heard that ridiculous price of five thousand dollars. But, you know, I'm kind of like our city manager there, almost the other city. It's kind of like chasing rabbits, isn't it, Mike?
He's not touching that with a bow. Does he look neutral, or is he not neutral?
No more further questions from Mike. No, I'm not, I'm not sorry. I'm sorry.
No further question, Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Reiner.
Thank you for looking into this, Michael and Chris. This is actually something that I was interested in because this is my world. I work with the elderly and retired population, and I thought this would be a good marketing tool, so that's why I wanted to bring it forward. I would love to see maybe a few more, I don't know, a little bit more information on what jobs it brings. My impression of something like this as a marketing tool is, we bring the elderly here, we bring people who want to retire, they spend money, some of them have a lot of money to spend, their families come here, they stay here for the weekend, they bring in tax revenue, sales tax revenue, those kinds of things. So that's the interest to me was in expanding our tourism a little bit and bringing those folks here. I didn't want to deter younger people from moving here, because I don't think that that would be the case. This is a great community for the older folks to live. It's a great retirement community. We have a lot going on here, and I think it would bring in some of that revenue, so that's why I wanted to pursue this. Five thousand dollars, I don't know, with our budget is probably kind of a drop in the bucket. That's, you know, that's my own personal opinion. I think it might be worth pursuing for a five-year stint, and we have a great director now for Visit Granbury, and I think that she probably could, I think she's here ten, if it's of interest, you know, I think it could be something that we could market, because we already have that going for us. We have a really great retirement community, and I think we ought to take advantage of that.
Right.
All right, Mayor, I changed my vote. She sold me.
Any more discussion, Counsel?
Mayor.
I'm from Corgit.
I mean, I would agree that being in the same field, this is a designation that holds some weight as far as the towns that have it. I personally, because of the amount of time, more or less than the dollar amount that it would cost to apply, I don't mind voting to give you guys direction to move forward and get some more information, but I would want to know what is the additional cost gonna be, if we're gonna have interns do it, or what the cost for, you know, an outside agency to come in and do all this for us, and then what the subsequent timeline would be to complete the process before I would feel comfortable going forward, but I don't have a problem saying, let's at least figure that out.
Well, I think that's, well, Chris, I think that's where we are, is a few thousand dollars probably either for an intern, for interns.
Well, I'm looking at tab five on the application, a marketing plan detailing the mission as applied to being a certified retirement community, the target market, the goals of the community, the strategies, tactics, and community will employ to attain the goals of the program. This sounds a whole lot more like strategic planning specifically for retirees in our community, and that's gonna require creating a committee, having someone facilitate that committee, and coming up with all these tasks to do this. And, yeah, I mean, once you get it done, if that's what y'all want to do, we'll do it. I'm just telling you, it's not just sit down and say, how many people live in your town and how many are retired. They're saying what kind of activities you're gonna do for these people, and what's going on in your community. You're gonna document the senior circle, you're gonna document what's going on at the senior citizens' building up on the hill there, you're gonna document what's going on in church programs, and you gotta have somebody research all that to be able to do that. So I think it's gonna be a little heftier labor cost than a couple of thousand bucks.
So can--
We can go back and look and--
Right, just to have an idea, would it be worth maybe contacting an outside agency and say, this is what we're doing, what's the general cost, and then compare that to what it would be to do it ourselves?
That would be a good hard cost to do it that way, if we outsourced it.
And right now, I don't know of anybody that does this. Like, there's only thirty-seven cities in the whole state that's done it.
Right.
And the website's not updated, so I'm not sure what T D A's doing.
Yeah, a lot of them on the list on the website are no longer participating, as it turned out.
Michael, where did y'all get the, it said here on number four, there was a lot of hours put in by a lot of different people, but no one kept track of our time.
That's a survey question from the city.
It should be a city at the top of that list.
What city did that?
What city did that?
Scroll up, and it'll tell you.
There's several cities in there.
Scroll up, and it'll tell you.
Top of each page.
Okay, what I'm questioning is, Chris, are those cities bigger than us or littler than us?
Well, what city is that? I can tell you.
I have no idea.
Commerce.
Commerce.
Commerce, Texas.
Bigger than us?
Yeah.
So it might cost us fifty cents instead of a quarter.
Here's Lampasses.
Bigger than us?
I don't know.
About the same size, probably.
Muleshoe is smaller than us.
Yeah, smaller.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselperson Reiner.
The beauty of Granbury is that we have a lot of resources here, and we communicate with each other already regarding pretty much everything that our city manager just discussed, senior center. I can tell you the names of every building in this town that will accommodate the elderly at different stages of their lives. So we have a lot of resources here, simple questions that can be answered. I don't think it's going to be as costly as we think that it is if we use the resources that we have wisely. I can sit down with somebody, and I believe Greg could too, and have some of those conversations. It wouldn't take very long. So I just, I think that it would be worth at least looking into.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Mobley.
Just go ahead and beat this dead horse a little longer.
Do it.
I think the five thousand dollars is probably the least, the lowest budget item concerning this. When you say anywhere from three years, three months to four years to do the, to do the research, that's what concerns me. I mean, that's a blank check at that point. And if you read the comments from some of the cities, and they talk about what are the positives, what are the negatives, many of them say they can't, there's no measurable value in it.
Right.
And, you know, I know in some of the discussions we have with various departments and organizations that deal with the city, we talk about, is there a measurable value? So I will put that on you. What is the measurable, what are we looking for here? Are we just writing a check to a state agency or a statewide agency to give us a checkmark by our name and put a little insignia by the city's symbol?
I don't know that it is measurable. We will not, unless someone comes here and part of a survey question is, what brought you here, and they say, oh, you're a certified retirement community, or I read, or I read that you're one of the top ten retirement communities in the state of Texas, or some other, in some other article. What, it depends on what that, that couple or individual is looking at. Many would just Google top places to retire in Texas and go have a list.
So we go from one to one A on the list?
It's hard to go. Yeah, we're as high as we can get. But, I mean, obviously, it could be used as a marketing tool. If that's, and a lot of cities, there's not a lot that responded, but some of those had economic development departments, and they had some staff there that could dedicate to this as well that we don't have yet as well. But we could certainly get a consultant to give us a price, look at all of this, and if Chris thinks that's a good direction, we can, we can have a couple of y'all talk to that consultant as well, just to give them some feedback so they could give us their best proposal price to deliver something like this, if that, if they think that's a good direction.
If that's what they want.
Can I, can I ask Tammy if she has an opinion?
You can. You can even make a motion if you want to.
Tammy, do you have any input on senior citizen certified communities? Have any experience with this?
That's why I was wondering if there's something she could do under her.
They're busy enough.
I do, this is the first I'm hearing about it, so I apologize that I don't know that much, but any type of stamp or certification on a senior program would be great, but I do agree that the cost could add up quickly when you bring in a consultant. I don't know that we're in a position in our department yet to take that on, but we'd be happy to explore it. Anything to help market, we'll be able to do. Anything to help market, we'll be able to do. So, how's that for both sides of the story?
Excellent. Sounds perfect.
Okay.
I'm not going to let her department do that. They're busy enough.
I'm not ready for all of this.
We can tell.
So, Mayor, I don't know if we need a motion yet, but...
Yes. If you want us to, if you want the council, the staff to go ahead and do some more research, you can make a motion on that, or we can...
All right, then I will make a motion that we direct the staff to answer some of the questions that were laid out here about time versus cost and what a consultant might look like, and then bring that back to council for the final vote.
I second that motion, Mayor. I wish that whoever it was would come before the council and let us ask some questions.
What do you mean whoever it was?
Whoever, whoever they're going to talk to.
We mailed a survey.
No, the consultant.
Nobody?
We got it, and writing back their comments.
Yeah, no, I said, no, y'all don't talk to anybody?
I don't think they did.
No. I thought you meant the consultant that we talked to, you wanted to come, but I don't...
Okay.
We're going to have to find one that can do this.
I second.
Chris may go.
Motion.
Maybe public manager.
You've got the second, and then you went right on into discussion, so.
Yeah.
So we have the motion to direct the staff to go ahead and do some more research on this, and we have a second. Any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I would like to amend that includes some kind of measurement going forward.
And to include measurements of outcomes?
Measurable results.
Okay.
I think that was covered in his motion.
You okay with that motion? I think that was with the motion, wasn't it?
It was said.
Yeah, he said all the questions that were asked.
Yeah.
You have to listen to tape, get them all over.
There's a whole bunch.
Do we have that in there?
Yeah, go ahead.
So any more discussion, council?
Whatever.
Right. Said none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. We'll look for another report from the staff in the future. No set date. Our next item is discuss and consider, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one here. Our next one is to provide an update on the feasibility of installing a sprinkler system in buildings on the Granbury Town Square, and I'm going to turn this over to Chris Kaufman, our city manager, to give us a report on that.
Well, thank you, Mayor, council. As we talked about this in the past, we actually took, put some action to it. Michael and some staff went to Grand Prairie, met with them, and I'll let Michael finish the report.
Thank you. As many of you know, if a fire were to break out in the square, it's likely to spread to the entire block and could result in potential catastrophic and historical loss. For this reason, city council did express an interest in protecting the historic town square with fire sprinkler systems, and you asked us to further evaluate the feasibility and the options for achieving this goal. A group of city representatives, as Chris said, did visit the city of Grapevine to learn how they successfully executed a similar project, and we attached their 2009 TML award application that they submitted. Had a lot of good detail in there of all the steps they went through and how they divided the costs and all those decision points that they went through, that if we go forward, can be good information for council to consider as well. The first step, if we choose to go forward, and council would like, would be to evaluate the feasibility by engaging a consultant that's familiar with these types of projects. We were lucky enough to find the consultant that performed the city of Plano, which is who Grapevine used as their model, and also did the city of Grapevine. So we found the guy that did both of those feasibility studies for those two cities, and we have a proposal in your packet from that company. He changed companies, but it was most important to go with the individual versus the old company, the more research we did with Grapevine. And so there's a feasibility study proposal in your packet for $35,000. Thirty, $3,700 is the proposal, and I asked for $1,300 in contingency to make it an even $35,000. And this funding would be added to a future budget amendment that would be brought to council. And so the recommendation from staff is to authorize the city manager to execute a preliminary feasibility study in the amount of $35,000 to determine the practicability and the estimated cost of installing this fire sprinkler system, systems in the buildings in the historic Granbury Town Square. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Michael. Council, you got any questions for Michael or Chris on this particular item? If none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the execution of a preliminary feasibility study in the amount of $35,000 to determine the practicability and the estimated cost of the installing the fire sprinkler system in the building on the historic Granbury Downtown Square, authorizing the city manager to perform this.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Corgan, and second by Councilman Mobley. Any more discussion on this, council?
Mayor, I've got one question.
Go ahead, Mr. Allen.
From my understanding, what I read here, the city will pay part of that, and then the merchants will pay part. We don't know what that percentage is or anything.
That's how Grapevine did it. So those would be, once we had this first phase, the feasibility work done, we'll know estimated costs, we'll know the consultant's recommendations on how those costs could be broken up.
Broken out, okay.
Which is how Grapevine did it, and then council can decide what's the best recipe for the city of Granbury. It may be very similar to the city of Grapevine's. At the end of the day, I think it was a great approach that they took. Plano did it in a more piecemeal approach, where as it changed ownership over many, many years, they would do one building ownership at a time instead of doing the whole thing and then just dividing up the costs.
Mike, there is a guy that lives here part-time named Chris Kellum that does overhead. In fact, I think he did the Opera House, if I'm not positive.
He used to do the...
But I know he does, do the commercial. And this will go after bids, right?
Yes, sir.
We're not giving it to anybody. We're just seeing this process.
Yeah, the feasibility study, if council concurs, will go to this consultant to do this first phase of study work, and then if it gets to the point where it's going out for construction, yes, sir, it would go, it would go out for open bid.
Will he give us an estimate, rough estimate?
The feasibility study will give us those estimates, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Now, there is, the same consultant, the same construction firm that specializes in this kind of work actually did Plano and Grapevine. And so we'll, this is kind of unique versus just your standard commercial construction, but we can talk about those kind of details when the time comes for pricing for actual construction. Yes, sir. Council, any more discussion? We have a motion in a second. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you, Michael.
See, Mayor. Mayor.
Allen.
Before we go in the executive office, can I say something, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I just, everybody knows Dutch Wilkinson passed away about a week ago. They had his funeral Sunday. We lost a great guy in our city. He helped us many, many ways that never got credit for it, didn't want credit for it. But if you see his wife, Rinda, give her a hug. She's taking it pretty hard. And I know the council knows him, because he's been up here several times. He owned Plantation Inn, he sold that to J.C., not you, Miss Campbell. But he was a really good guy for our city, and a good guy, and a good Christian man. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you.
So I now declare the Granbury City Council convened into open session, and all the members are present, and the city council will go into the closed session pursuant to the provisions of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in these following sections. Section 551-074, section 551-071, consultation with the attorney, section 551-072, deliberation regarding real property, and section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development. And I would also like to, Mayor, to follow up with Mr. Allen and take this moment as we recognize Dutch Wilkinson and all he's done for this community as we gavel out. Rest in peace, Dutch. Council has reconvened into open session. There was no action taken in the executive session. At this time, council, is there any more discussion? If no further discussion, the council meeting is adjourned.